Okay, then we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Finan. President Brown.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Frueing Bogus.
Present.
Patrick Brown.
Here.
Mary Alice Wu.
Here.
Darlene Kleppel. Kyle Patterson. Jim Goss. Tom Bruno. Katina Wiltshire.
I'm here.
Thank you. And Anna Owee.
Here.
And Mayor Marlin.
Present.
Thank you.
Next, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. That's Katina Wiltshire.
I'll second it. Tammy Frueing Bogus.
It's moved by Katina, seconded by Tammy. Do we need, we need a roll call vote, please, on this?
Okay, Mayor Finan. President Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Frueing Bogus.
Yes.
Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel. Kyle Patterson. Jim Goss. Tom Bruno. Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anna Owee.
Yes.
And Mayor Marlin.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is audience participation, and I'll ask staff to help me identify if there's anyone with a hand raised in the audience. I'm not seeing any on my end.
I don't believe so, Mayor. No.
Okay, I'll take one more look. Okay, we'll move on to minutes from the meeting of March 26, 2021. Could I have a motion, please? To approve.
John makes the motion.
Okay, is that John or Patrick?
I forgot Patrick is on here. John will make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second by Mayor Smith.
Seconded by Mayor Smith. Is there any discussion? Okay, well, we, please have a roll call.
Mayor Finan. President Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Frueing Bogus.
Yes.
Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel. Kyle Patterson. Jim Goss. Tom Bruno. Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anna Owee.
Yes.
And Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion carries. Next item is the consolidated financial reports. Betty?
Yes, good morning, everyone. So I think all of you have the financial reports for the prior three months, March, April, and May 2021. The fund balance in those three months ranged from 16.4 in March, 15.6 in April, and 19.4 in May, reflecting primarily the receipt of the U.S. Treasury Department funding in the amount of 6.1 million and half of the emergency rental, 3.1 million for our Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Those funds are restricted for that program. Our receivables during this period range just over 1.1 million, but given the volume of our transactions and activity during this period post-pandemic, this is reasonable. So our fund balances continue to remain healthy.
Any questions for Betty, and then we'll get a motion on the table for discussion? Okay, could I have a motion for approval? Or to approve the consolidated financial reports for March, April, and May 2021?
I'll motion, Anna.
Moved by Anna.
I'll second that, Wiltshire.
Seconded by Katina. Any discussion? All right, could we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Finan. President Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Smith. Mayor Frueing Bogus.
Yes.
Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel. Kyle Patterson. Jim Goss. Bruno. Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anna Owee.
Yeah.
And Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion carries. Next item is the list of bills presented by Betty Murphy.
Sure. So you have in your packet the list of bills from March, April, and May of 2021. As you might expect, given the volume of post-pandemic funding that we receive primarily for emergency shelter and utilities, the sheer volume of bill processing is fairly significant during this three-month period. Again, mostly for emergency rental assistance and utility assistance to low-income eligible clients. All charges are appropriate in this packet, and there is nothing unusual to report.
Any questions about any of these specific funds? All right, could I get a motion to accept and place on file the list of bills for March, April, and May of 2021?
John Brown will make the motion.
Moved by John Brown. Second?
Smith makes second.
Seconded by Chuck Smith. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, could we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Finan. President Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Frueing Bogus.
Yes.
Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel. Kyle Patterson. Jim Goss. Tom Bruno. Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anna Owee.
Yes.
And Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion carries. Next, on the agenda are a number of action items related to various budget amendments and supplemental funding requests. Is there, and that's going to be presented by, is that you, Betty?
Sure. So the first budget amendment is for our Fund 104, which is our Early Childhood Fund, Department 900, which is for a COVID-19 supplement from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $200,445. As a result of the Consolidated Appropriations Act in 2021, approximately $250 million was available to Head Start grantees for one-time activities in response to COVID-19. So this one-time formula allocation was based on our federally funded enrollment, which currently stands at 666 in our Head Start and early Head Start grants. So the one-time specific actions that we request here are to address emergency facility repairs in our center-based programming. So funds will be focused on ventilation improvements to reduce the risk of indoor transmission, installing upgraded or new heating systems at the Ran Tool and Savoy sites, and dishwasher replacement at the Urbana location. Funds will also be used to enhance our technology infrastructure, purchase additional PPEs, and improve our outdoor play areas. Those outdoor play areas will allow for us to provide options for safe learning and creative play outdoors during many of the months when the weather is acceptable. So these are necessary improvements to accelerate our in-person center-based programming consistent with all safety protocols and responsive to community needs. So I request your approval for this budget amendment.
And as I'm looking at the agenda, I believe we're gonna, the plan is to approve these in an omnibus manner at the end of the presentation, so.
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so let's move on to item B.
Yes, thank you. So the second budget amendment, again, for Fund 104, which is our Early Childhood Fund. This is the American Rescue Plan Act supplement, again, an allocation from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $796,869. One point nine trillion dollars of the American Rescue Plan included approximately $1 billion for Head Start. All Head Start, early Head Start grantees were eligible to receive funds based on proportionate funded enrollment levels. So the RPC right now has been paying for the supplemental teacher aid staffing, which is the third person in the classroom. That includes wages and benefits. We would like to use this funding to continue that because we've had a loss of funding during the pandemic to receive subsidy reimbursements from the state of Illinois. This, during the period of the pandemic, our program served about one-third fewer children than before the pandemic began. And so we're really interested in restoring our center-based programming so our families can begin to go back to work or attend school or job training. And that is what the community assessment indicates that they would like. So we believe there will be anticipated demand for in-person learning as vaccinations continue to increase. So this, this funding will be used to fund that third person in the classroom, but also to continue to maintain safety protocols for PPE staff training, enhanced janitorial and cleaning services, and repair and maintenance, including an emergency roof repair at our Champagne West facility. Funds have also been designated for teacher recruitment and outreach activities to reach eligible children and families. So these one-time investments will best support the immediate needs of our staff, children, and families while also adhering to all federal guidelines related to ARPA funding.
Any questions for Betty on this one? Okay, we'll move on to the emergency rental assistance.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This one is for our Fund 075, which is the RPC's General Operating Fund. This is for our emergency rental assistance from the U.S. Department of the Treasury. It's our second allocation. Our first allocation, as you may recall, was 6.2 million, and that funding was through September of 2022. This is our second allocation for ERA funding. We received 50% of that, or 3.140182 million, and this funding is good through September of 2025. So to meet this need, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program makes funding available to low-income clients to pay rent or utilities, to eligible landlords and eligible clients. So the two funding streams were established. ERA I provided 25 billion under the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021, and ERA II, which is what we have here, 21.55 billion, under the American Rescue Plan Act. So these funds were provided directly to state and local governments, and again, we use this to provide assistance to eligible households. 90% of this must be used for direct financial assistance, including rent, rent arrears, utilities, home energy costs, and other expenses relating to housing stability. We also have funding for case management to assist these clients with other services that the RPC may provide, all in the idea to provide not just housing stability, but eventual self-sufficiency. ERA II, just as a note here, as of June 21, the staff has just been incredibly inundated with applications for funding for ERA II. We've already dispersed over 3,091,984, and we've served 1,124 households. So there's a big demand for this funding, and we're trying to get it out as quickly as we can.
Any questions for Betty? I had a couple. First of all, do you expect that you will get the second part of the ERA II funding?
Yes, we absolutely anticipate that because, again, this ERA II funding is good through September of 2025. So we will definitely get that second amount, and it will likely come later in the year or after the beginning of the new fiscal year. So we'll include that in our new budget.
And just so I understand, at this point, most of that second allocation is already committed, so there's.
We're anticipating, based on our document, that we'll receive it, so we haven't heard otherwise.
No, I mean, in terms of the clients receiving assistance, you have enough clients in the waiting list to use the entire allocation.
Let's all let you address that.
Yes, we should. My understanding from Lisa Benson is that we will be kicking off ERA II, which is what you just approved, well, what you're about to approve here in about the next week or so. But the demand, as Betty's pointed out, is, is, is there, so we anticipate being able to exhaust both ERA I and ERA II, but we haven't, we haven't started taking applications for ERA II yet.
Okay, that's, I guess that's what I was trying to get at. And then my last question is, I'm still hearing, you know, occasionally from landlords who, who has the assistance that goes directly to landlords to cover tenants who are in arrears. Is that, has that been depleted?
From what, from what was just reported, we still have a balance on ERA I. So it hasn't been fully depleted yet, no.
So if the landlord wants to help a tenant apply for these funds or be reimbursed directly, they, they should be contacting Lisa Benson's staff.
Absolutely, and I know that we've had tenant forums to provide information to them, but yes, they should contact us directly.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, just to add to that, you know, the preference is to pay the landlords directly, but that doesn't mean that we can't pay the tenants as well. And this funding can pay not just for rent and rent arrears, but also utilities, including water and service sewer bills. So, you know, there's a lot of demand for this, and as Delitzio pointed out, we've already expended half of the first allocation.
Well, I know the sanitary district has thousands of clients apparently behind, so this is good to know. Okay, we'll move on to project management, ARPA project management.
Yeah, so this is, again, a new department in our General Operating Fund, which is 075. This is for the American Rescue Plan Project Management for Champagne County. And this accommodates a contract with the county, between the county and the RPC, to support project and fiscal management of Champagne County's ARPA allocation, which is just shy of $41 million. So this amendment is, will allow us six months of FY '21 to provide funding for a staff person at the RPC who's very familiar with federal and state grant processing, as well as a fiscal person to manage the county's ARPA allocation process. So this will include tracking one, these one-time investments and appropriations, researching alternative funding sources to make sure that we're leveraging these projects appropriately, monitoring the federal guidance as it continues to evolve, and also ensuring compliance with all federal programmatic and fiscal reporting. So this grant will allow us to independently charge staff time against the county and to support the county in their effort to evaluate projects over the period between now and 2026 related to the allocation of the $41 million in ARPA funding. This administrative expense represents just over 1.5% of the total $41 million ARPA allocation.
Questions for Betty on this one? I have a question. Do you have the capacity to do this administrative service for any other local governments? We're, we're looking at about, receiving about $13 million. Our grants management staff, you know, we're gonna have to hire additional staff to manage this ARPA allocation, but do you at RPC have the ability to, to contract with other governments, like you're doing with the county?
I think we do. We have an individual who has been focused, really, in the last several years as our economic development specialist. And as you know, our economic development revolving loan funds have decreased significantly. There's very little demand for business loans, commercial loans. Most of the banks are doing that on their own independently. So this person's background is significant in terms of federal and state grants management. So we believe that she will have some additional time to manage this. And yes, we could certainly look at other contractual options here, depending on the time. But again, this is going to be, this particular contract will be for 22 and a half hours a week of her time. So there is still some sufficient time that we could potentially allocate to other units of government.
This is the best news I've had all week. Thank you. Okay, I'll be calling you. Next item is budget amendment for Urbana Senior Repair.
Yeah, so this is, again, in our General Operating Fund in the amount of $40,000. The city of Urbana received a new CDBG grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to provide minor home repairs for seniors and disabled residents. So the RPC staff will be responsible for administering this grant, providing labor and materials for qualified repairs. We also run a weatherization program, so we have the staff capacity to do this. And we will also document the expenditures and client income eligibility. We plan to serve about 16 Urbana residents annually under this particular contract.
Any questions on this one? All right, next up is LIHEAP ARPA.
Yes, so thank you. This is, again, our General Operating Fund. This is LIHEAP. This amount is for, again, new American Rescue Plan Act funding from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $4.7 million. As you know, the federal low-income home energy program, better known as LIHEAP, is a well-established program to assist low-income households afford essential home energy services. So LIHEAP funds generally cover any kind of home heating or cooling, including natural gas, propane, oil. So in addition to the $3.75 billion annual federal LIHEAP appropriation, states also got a $900 million under the CARES Act. But the ARPA funding provided an additional, this is passed through federal funding, of 4.5 billion with 242.6 million allocated to the state of Illinois through September 2022. And so this is our pass-through amount for our local service area.
Questions on this one? All right, we'll move on to the next LIHEAP state supplement.
Sure. So again, this is the LIHEAP state supplement. So this is through the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $495,700. This amendment will accommodate new state of Illinois supplemental funding for LIHEAP benefits for the period July 1, 2021 through June of 2022. These funds will be utilized to serve non-PIP. PIP is the Percentage of Income Payment Plan customer. So in the past, the state gave us one grant to serve both traditional LIHEAP as well as PIP customers. They've subsequently segregated these funding streams, so this will accommodate that additional funding in the amount of $495,700.
I'd just go ahead and speak to the next item, too. It sounds like it's related.
Sure. So this is the final LIHEAP. This, again, is federal supplement in the amount of $3,150,168. This amendment is for, the state of Illinois has created what's called the UDAP, the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program, in direct response to preventing disconnection of energy services for eligible low-income LIHEAP households. So UDAP participants can receive a one-time credit to clear their arrears from anywhere between a minimum of $250 to a maximum of $5,000 per UDAP participant per energy source. These supplemental Health and Human Services Fund are being utilized for the program that will serve approximately 30,000 home utility accounts from being shut off across the entire state of Illinois. RPC staff have already served 7,672 eligible households from July of 2020 to May of 2021. So this will just allow us to continue to serve those eligible households. This amendment also includes, we received state approval for the purchase of a specialty LIHEAP van in the amount of $158,975 utilizing GSA fleet pricing. These federal pass-through funds will be utilized for this vehicle purchase. This specialty van, which will have six computer workstations for our case managers, this will allow us to expand our outreach and our client intake throughout Champagne County in all of our underserved areas, both in the short and the long term. It will make it easier for clients to access our services. It will increase visibility in the community, and we believe there will be ongoing demand due to the impact, the longer-term impact of the pandemic. So we look forward to this, but based on shortages, computer chip shortages, and other shortages, the specialty van won't be available till likely next November or December. But again, we look forward to serving all the areas within Champagne County, and particularly underserved rural areas with this specialty van.
Persons who wish to access the LIHEAP or the disconnection clearing their accounts, do they contact Lisa Benson's office?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the next two items are on, related to Head Start. That's Brandy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm seeking your approval of the Health and Safety Supplemental Funding Request to replace the HVAC systems at the Ran Tool Head Start and Savoy Head Start Centers, which will address the remaining concerns identified in the 2018 feasibility assessment conducted by Restock Reed and Company Architects. It will also decrease the cost of repairs and maintenance, new outdated equipment, and improve the ventilation and air quality for each of the facilities. Also, the program is requesting a privacy fence for a child's compass. They are one of our contracted family childcare home providers. This will increase safety and security for the children who are enrolled at this facility, for the children who are playing outside. In addition, the program needs updated security camera software and equipment to enhance security and prevent system failures at the Ran Tool, Savoy, Champagne, and Urbana Centers, as well as our school buses. By approving this funding request, you are approving submission to the level of funding as proposed. The Policy Council will review this request at the June 28 meeting. The total supplemental funding request is $480,674, and that includes the HVAC systems for both centers, the fence installation at the family childcare home, and all of the security and video camera software and equipment needed for the centers and buses. We are also requesting a waiver for the non-federal match. Due to COVID-19 pandemic and lack of resources impacted by a major disaster, Champagne County requests that waiver from, for the non-federal match.
Any questions for Brandy? Okay, and then the last item is the background check policy. Becky?
Mayor, Mayor, I have one more.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. The second request is also a health and safety request for the Early Childhood Expansion Grant. This is to complete a full roof replacement at the West Champagne facility on Country Fair Drive in Champagne, and also an upgrade to their security camera software and equipment. The replacement of the roof and upgrade to the software will enhance our security system, offer a safe environment for the children, families, and employees, and maintain a quality center. When we acquired the facility in 2019, we did have a roofing assessment completed, and we were informed that it would, you know, would last us at least five to six years. However, in However, in recent months, um, our roof in several different places um has been failing. And recently, yesterday, we we sprung another leak in the west side of the building. Um, so by approving the funding request, you are approving submission uh for the level of funding as proposed. The total Health and Safety Supplemental Funding Request is $149,495. This includes the roof replacement and the upgraded uh camera software and equipment. We are also requesting a um waiver for the non-federal match due to COVID-19 pandemic and the lack of resources impacted by this disaster.
Thank you, Brandy. Any questions for Brandy on this one? All right, we'll move on to background checks item.
Good morning again. Thank you so much, Mayor. The background check and criminal convictions policy was recently revised to be in compliance with the amendments to the Illinois Human Rights Act enacted on March 23, 2021. The revisions to the current policy include the necessary procedures to ensure applicants and employees with previous criminal records are not discriminated during the applicant process or during their employment with the RPC. The policy states that applicants and employees with prior criminal records will have the opportunity to explain their circumstances and be considered for jobs, transfers, promotions, based on interactive assessment, whether there is a substantial relationship between the conviction and job, and determine whether the conviction creates reasonable risk to the RPC. Uh, we are seeking your approval of the proposed policy revisions today. Thank you.
Questions for Becky on this? Okay, I'm seeing none. Um, the action item on this is a motion to approve the action items A through K. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Wiltshire.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mary Alice Wu.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, good morning, Mayor. Finan has joined us. President Brown?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Uh, President Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Frueling Bogus?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu?
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel? Al Patterson? Jim Goss? Tom Bruno? Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anna Oldman?
Yes.
And Mayor Marlon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item are the uh reports from Head Start and Early Head Start. Brandy?
Good morning again. Um, let me let me pull up, pardon just a minute. In your packet, you will find the management reports from February, March and April of 2021. The program's cumulative enrollment totaled 507 children and pregnant women at the end of May out of the funded enrollment of 666, or 76% um of our funded enrollment. We still have a high number of children staying with relatives due to COVID-19 concerns. Between now and August, we will also see more enrollment fluctuation due to children transitioning to kindergarten. The family support team completed several recruitment activities, such as posting videos on our Facebook page, uh distributing flyers, canvassing neighborhoods throughout our county, and participating in local events to recruit more families and children to fill vacancies. Since September 2020, we served 40 homeless families and assisted 16 so far with acquiring housing. Number of children enrolled with diagnosed disabilities was still very low, um, at only 30 diagnosed for the month of April. The Child and Family Services Manager reported we had 15 referrals waiting waiting to be reviewed through the local school districts and early intervention agency. So we are hoping that that, those numbers will increase. Um, we are required as a program to meet 10% of our enrollment to be children with disabilities, so around 66 or 67 uh children. Our services at the centers and through off-site programming reported various activities, such as celebrating the Week of a Young Child in April, distributing food to families, completing virtual home visits, providing training to staff, performing emergency drills, offering reading time from the WLL book mentors, honoring and appreciating our employees for their achievements and hard work, and also discussing safety within our community and our facilities. I do need to report to the board um that gun violence in our community has been affecting our families and our employees personally. Um, on Wednesday, our West Champaign Center had to uh go on lockdown due to a shooting nearby. We had children and employees on the playground at the time of the shooting. Uh, the employees took immediate action and safely brought everyone inside the building and initiated our lockdown procedures until we received um an all-clear from the police department. Yesterday, at the Urbana Center, one of our employees reported finding a hole in the wall um and his chair, as well as a bullet inside one of our offices. Uh, the police department was uh was called, they investigated, and we also discovered the incident occurred around Tuesday, uh, June 22 at 6:00 PM. Uh, we did not have children or um staff in the building at the time. However, we did have a um a cleaning crew that had just arrived when this occurred. It was also reported to me yesterday that we um lost a parent um from an earlier shooting this week um at our Champaign Center. Uh, so needless to say, um, these are very upsetting times um for our staff and our families. Um, they are struggling with the violence in our community, and we are working to secure support uh for our families as well as our employees. I met with staff yesterday personally and will continue to do so throughout today um to just hear them um and hear their concerns. We also um have scheduled parent cafes uh for families to lead, network, and support each other through challenges. And we plan to facilitate it, facilitate a discussion around uh community safety um and also at our our um our facilities. Finally, um, I recently received notice that we have a federal review scheduled for the week of July 12. Um, I will need the board's support to participate in governing body interviews, which will be scheduled sometime during that week. Um, this review will focus on fiscal, um, enrollment, health and safety, as well as our governing body and Policy Council responsibilities. Um, I will provide more information once I meet with a team leader on Monday and um send out interview dates and times um for this board. Um, I am hopeful that at least two of the RPC Commission board members will be able to participate um in an interview um process through a Zoom meeting. Um, I don't have anything else further. If you have any questions, please let me know. Um, I do want to report to the board that I do need to excuse myself early uh due to the needs at the centers.
Thank you, Brandy. Any questions for Brandy? Just to confirm, Brandy, the incident on June 22 was the Philo Road?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct. The um police department believes that it was associated to another incident within the area. Um, and it was a a drive-by shooting. And it wasn't, we weren't targeted. It was just that they were shooting at each other. That's what they believe.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And I do have a question. Um, Brandy, what week did you say those interviews will will take place?
Hi, Katina. Yes.
Hi, Brandy.
Hi, um, it'll be the uh the week of July 12. Um, I should have more information on Monday morning um from the federal team leader as to um what dates and times they would like to have those interviews done.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve the Head Start Management Report, including the financials and service area reports for February, March and April 2021 as presented?
So moved, Wiltshire.
Is there a second?
Second by Anna.
Second by Anna? Further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Finan?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Frueling Bogus?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu?
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel? Al Patterson? Jim Goss? Tom Bruno? Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anna Oldman?
Yeah, yeah.
And and Mayor Marlon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next agenda item are the program division updates.
Yes, good morning again. Uh, so just a few things I'd like to update the board on. Baker Tilly, the independent auditors for Champaign County, completed the FY19 single audit um and submitted it to the Federal Clearing House and State GATA Portal on June the 1st. On June the 3rd, the notice of non-compliance and the stop pay was lifted in the State GATA Portal. So we were relieved about that. That was the second stop pay, as you may recall, the first being on March 17th and the second being on May 20th. Uh, the audit can be reviewed in its entirety on the Champaign County Auditor's website under 2019 CAFRA, which is Consolidated Annual Financial Report. Of note, there were no programmatic or fiscal audit findings related to the RPC. Major federal programs intensively reviewed for the county included two, Head Start and our Lyheep program at the RPC. Um, just of note, Champaign County did not qualify as a low-risk auditi due to material weaknesses and deficiencies in internal control and segregation of duties. The primary findings in the audit related to timeliness for bank reconciliations and transactional activity recording in the treasurer's office. In particular, the 2019 monthly bank reconciliations for operating counts were not completed or made available until 2021. It was also noted that cash and electronic receipts were not consistently or accurately recorded in the county's general ledger on a timely basis, and daily reconciliations of cash deposits were not prepared or reviewed during the entirety of 2019. These issues were also noted in all of the RPC's recent state and federal monitoring reviews. Uh, it's my understanding that these issues have been addressed by the county and uh steps have been made to remediate these issues. Uh, the second point, as Brandy pointed out, is we're preparing for the Head Start Focus Area 1 Virtual Monitoring Review. That review is going to focus on program design, management, and the governance structure, as well as our strategies during the pandemic. The reviewers will also assess our fiscal infrastructure capacity and responsiveness. Uh, fiscal staff have begun work on the FY22 budget, which we will present to the board in late August. And finally, we continue to to participate in the customized design of the new Enterprise Resource System that the county is implementing with Tyler Technologies. This will be for a new accounting and human capital management system with an implementation target date of October 1st. As you might expect, the RPC is a critical player in the design of this accounting and human capital management process because we are one of the largest divisions of the county and we are solely grant-funded. So uh this has taken a lot of staff effort, but we believe this will really expedite our processing. So um that has been time well spent, and that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Betty? All right, we'll move on to Becky.
Thank you, Mayor. The Human Resources Report included in your packet today represents personnel transactions from March 10, 2021 through June 5, 2021. RPC currently has 455 active employees, which includes 123 work-experienced participants and 21 youth service or summer youth participants. The Human Resources Department has been focused on several staffing strategies to attract, motivate, and retain qualified staff amongst the challenges presented by COVID-19. The management team is working strategically to fill 24 positions as soon as possible, and we hope to hold that strong and get those numbers down and people in place in positions. Our team is constantly developing our recruitment strategies by connecting with local colleges and high school youth employment programs and partnering with minority and veterans organizations. Our senior management team is in the initial stages of developing intentional strategies to continue to support diversity with our hiring practices and to remain, retain valuable talent necessary to deliver excellent services in our communities. Since the last time we met, our team has been working on reviewing our personnel policy for essential changes. And there there are plenty that will be coming, by the way. Um, RPC recently adopted Champaign County's COVID-19 testing policy in collaboration with OSF Healthcare System to provide employee-free COVID-19 tests. Another policy we are working on includes the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. The Cultural Competency Committee is reviewing the policy and will be providing valuable feedback from our staff at next month's meeting. Uh, we previously talked and approved the um background check um policy, so we'll skip forward there. Um, as I have mentioned at previous meetings, our team has initiated the early stages of implementing human capital, the human capital management system. Next week, the Human Resources Department will begin working with Munis Tyler and the IT Department to develop the workflow with the Performance Management System. On a final note, our senior management team has recently partnered with Lighthouse Services to offer employee and anonymous reporting hotline. As RPC is committed to high levels of integrity and creating an environment that supports the ethics noted in our vision and mission, the hotline services is an additional resource for RPC employees to discuss confidential concerns, harassment, human resources issues, discrimination, and misconduct. I'd be happy to answer any questions today.
Any questions for Becky? And just to confirm, there's no action required on this report?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Lisa, is she here today?
Uh, no, she's not.
Rita Black? There you are.
Yes, I'm here. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Okay. Um, I'm happy to report that um we have received approval from IDOT for three different grants that we submitted uh last fall. The three grants um were the Advanced Transportation Equity, the Sustainable Neighborhood Bus Route Evaluation for the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District, and one related to Ran Tool to study the impact of free transit service that we had during the COVID uh pandemic. Uh, we haven't received the agreements. We just received the notification about, two weeks ago, about the approval of this funding. Next, please. Also, I want you to be aware that we updated the uh indicators on the Regional Data Portal. That's the website where we have uh that information. On the, on that data portal, we have the Champaign County Community indicators, but we also have uh the Regional Dashboard and the Information Clearing House. Next, please. Uh, under the community Under the Community Indicators, we have 35 different coins referred to eight different categories, including accessibility, economics, and poverty, education, engagement, health, mobility, safety, and sustainability. And for example, under accessibility, we have some indicators. Can you please move to the next one? We have access to bicycle facilities, access to par, access to transit, access to internet technologies. You can go there, look at all the data, look at all the sources. You can download the data, look at graphics, tables, and all that for all the different indicators. Next, please. On the Regional Dashboard, we provide data about demographic, economic, and environmental data related to Champagne County, the municipalities, and the townships. For some of you that were familiar with the Champagne County Statistical Abstract that we used to produce years ago, this is basically the same content. This data is mostly descriptive and provide a lot of information for people who are constantly contacting us about data that they need for applying for grants and for different projects that they are doing. The data is mostly updated on an annual basis, but for some data that is updated every five years, and there is some data that is updated with the decennial census, then we have all the information there. And the other set of data that we have there is the information. For the Regional Dashboard, next please, we have data related to agriculture, education, employment, income, poverty, household and families, natural resources, population, transportation, all different categories. Then lastly, we have, next one please, the Information Clearing House. In there, you can have a lot of information related to different topics in more depth. And this is for people who are doing mostly research related to our area, and we also have in there all the information about the different local government and services. People can click in there for the different cities and township and information related to those entities. Just for you to know that all that information has been updated with the most recent data, 2019 data that is available. Our next step related to the indicators, that's something that we update every year, is updating the data as soon as the 2020 census is available. The data is available hopefully this September, and as always, with the new results from the American Community Survey. Lastly, I want, next one please, to make you aware that hopefully we'll be having the full 2021 bike month going on. The 2020 bike month was canceled, but now we are planning on having bike month 2021 this fall. It's planned for Tuesday, September 14. And Tuesday, September 14, we are also holding Light the Night. Bike to Work Day will be Wednesday, September 15, rain day, and Tuesday, September 21, will be the rain day for Light the Night. And please be aware, and ride your bike on that day. We are expecting everybody to be riding their bike on Tuesday, September 14. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Rita? I think every event in the Champagne County is being planned for the month of September.
Correct.
Okay, last on this section is Dr. Arnold, Workforce Development.
Mayor, he's not here today either.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to DeLitz's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. I know it's been, what, a couple months since we last met, so I'll be kind of brief to provide you just some updates on some internal things and some external things. Internally, one of the things we've been working on, particularly with our Early Childhood Education Division, is some strategic planning to think about how else to structure our program based on our most recent experience with COVID, but then also based on some of the indicators that we have been seeing throughout the community. So we've had a few sessions, and part of our planning so far, we're potentially looking at establishing additional sites in other parts of the county. We've had some initial, very preliminary, initial exploratory conversations with Patrick Brown from Mohammed, and we're looking into some possibilities in that community as far as providing some center-based early childhood programming. So as that evolves and as we learn more, we certainly will keep you informed. We are also still trying to figure out how to structure our space needs overall as the Regional Planning Commission. Part of that, again, in response to the pandemic. And then, of course, with some of the growth that we have been experiencing as an organization. And so we have, particularly here at Brookins, been looking at how else to accommodate our staffing and space needs, as well as looking at other facilities and locations within Champagne County where some of our programs can be extended to. The other thing that I wanted to report to you on is that our agency is part of a statewide task force with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in looking at the Water Assistance Program, which there are several millions of dollars that were appropriated to provide water assistance. As a matter of fact, one of those meetings is today, following this meeting. It is our anticipation that the Water Assistance Program will be initiated this September alongside our LIHEAP program. So the good thing is there has been water assistance provided through various other funds, including the ERA, as was reported earlier, as well as through Community Services Block Grant funding. But these funds that we are discussing with the state are specifically, were specifically appropriated for purposes of providing water assistance. You may also know that we were one of the organizations that took up the opportunity to partner with the Champagne-Urbana Mass Transit District on the vaccination outreach by placing a, not an ad, but placing messaging on one of their buses on the need for folks to get vaccinated. And so I believe that that bus, which unfortunately has my image on it, will be in circulation for the next three months, and we're hopeful that, that alongside what other organizations that will partner with MTD, that will get more of our residents of our community to get vaccinated. I also wanted to report to you that effective this month, I was appointed to the Champagne County Chamber of Commerce, and will be representing the Regional Planning Commission on the chamber and looking forward to serving our community, as well as the businesses in our community in that capacity. Last week, last Thursday, was fortunate to be part of a speaker series that was inaugurated last week through the University of Illinois Springfield, and this was primarily with the Illinois Legislative Black Caucus to discuss the four legislative pillars that the Black Caucus managed to pass through the General Assembly. And last week's series featured Senate Majority Leader Kimberly Lightford, myself, and a couple other people to discuss primarily the pillars that do have an impact on the work that we do here. And so my focus was on early childhood education, as well as on some of the economic empowerment initiatives that were part of their pillars. They're intending to do this throughout the year, but last week's was the first one. Finally, I just wanted to report to you that as of probably August, I will be the National Chair for Community Action. That is representing about 1,000 community action agencies, of which the Regional Planning Commission is one. That gives us an opportunity to be at the seat, at the table. When we're discussing a lot of the initiatives that were approved today, that organization is certainly part of making that happen with our congressional, with our Congress. So we'll certainly keep you informed on a lot of these external things that are part of what we do to enhance the work that we do here in Champagne County. With that said, Mayor, that concludes my oral report.
Thank you, DeLitz. Are there any questions for DeLitz? All right, moving on to all business. I see none listed. New business. And who's going to?
I can do that. I can explain this, Mayor. So the first item under new business is the establishment of a nominating committee to appoint a community representative. We have this on here because it's our understanding that Ms. Owen will be stepping down as a community representative on the Regional Planning Commission after this meeting today. And so in order to replace her, my belief, I think in the past, we've had a nominating committee meet and establish what the process would be in soliciting nominations from the community. Last time, the nominating committee consisted of the past chair of the Regional Planning Commission, Pius Wyble. It had the Mayo of St. Joe, the Village of Savoy, Mayo of Rantool, and then Mohammed. Those were the communities that, or the individuals that made up the nominating committee. But you can appoint, I guess, whomever you would like to appoint to serve in that capacity.
Do the, is this according to our bylaws, to RPC bylaws, or do we have flexibility there?
In terms of the communities that were in the nominating?
Yeah, the process or the people?
The people, not in the bylaws, no, but the process is in the bylaws.
Process is in the bylaws.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Done.
I actually thought who sat on the committee was dictated by the bylaws, but maybe I'm wrong about that.
I may have to double check that.
I think our, and maybe I'm misremembering, but I thought our kind of founding members and that, I think it's, you know, Rantool, Urbana, and Champagne, and then there may have been others that were on there as well, but I could be misremembering it.
Looks like we will look into that. And then is there a specific process outlined in the bylaws? I guess that would be my other question. I'm sorry I didn't look at them before this meeting.
Mayor, if I may step in, I'm just looking at them. It says the chair of the commission shall appoint a nominating committee, which shall be composed of one representative from each charter member and one representative from the general members. If that is any help.
And the charter members are Champagne, Urbana, Savoy?
Champagne County, City of Champagne, City of Urbana, and the Village of Rantool.
Rantool, okay. Champagne, Urbana, the county, and Rantool.
Yeah.
And then we need a community?
The general members are all the other municipalities.
Okay.
And I think Savoy was one of those last time.
Okay. Well, it sounds like what we need is a general member to this, in addition to the charter members for this nominating committee.
Savoy's happy to participate on that.
Who is this?
Savoy.
Savoy, okay. Okay, so the nominating committee will be consisting of Champagne, Urbana, the county, Rantool, and Savoy. And we will need to follow the process, and the process is outlined in the bylaws.
I think the next thing might be, DeLitz, for me to schedule something with these people?
Right.
With the members, and they can discuss the process?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, does that sound reasonable to everyone? Okay, we'll look forward to that. And then the second item here is the task force to review and update the RPC bylaws. And again, is there a requirement for membership or process there?
That, I should have checked the bylaws. I can, we can look into that and get back to the commission in terms of who the task force members should be.
Okay. Is there a deadline that this has to be done by?
No, and Mayor, this is as a result of, I think, one of the meetings we had might have been late last year. One of the points, I believe, I think it might have been, one of the mayors brought up, had to do with the terms for the chairs, for the commission to look into that, because currently it's a one-year term. And I think there was, there was interest in looking at, perhaps, maybe having that as a two-year term or something to that effect. And I think the last time these bylaws were updated was, I think, 2015. So this might be time for the commission to look at not only that, but other areas that might need updating.
Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, we'll get some more information on what we need to do there, and then get back with the commissions. That sound, okay?
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you, Anna, for your service. I wish we were in person so we could say goodbye in a three-dimensional mode, but it's been a pleasure serving with you on this board.
Thank you very much. I truly learned a lot.
All right, is there any, let's see, there's no other new business listed here.
Mayor, I have one more thing, if I might.
Sure.
I regret to inform this board, maybe many of you know, but we lost two key members of the RPC family in the last month. Mark Edwards, the former police training director, who was with our organization over 35 years and performed, you know, dedicated work to the law enforcement community in terms of presenting state-of-the-art police training and officers, for police officers and correctional staff. And the second one is Jonathan Westfield, who was our Youth Assessment Center Coordinator. Jonathan worked in the law enforcement community for a number of years. So the loss of these two key staff members has impacted all of us at the RPC, and we just wanted to report that to the board. We all feel very privileged to have worked alongside this dedicated staff as they were committed so much to improving our community and making this a better place to live. So I just wanted to recognize them during this meeting.
Thank you, Brandy. It's been a devastating month for the law enforcement community and the community as a whole in many ways. Is there any further business? Then we will stand adjourned.